I would like to call to order the March 20th, 2017, meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Welcome. It's good to have everybody with us tonight. We are very happy to have with us tonight for our presentation of colors, Boy Scout Group Troop 222 from Harrisburg United Methodist Church. If you would, please stand.
Post the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And after our invocation, we'll ask our Boy Scout troop to come up and introduce themselves, and we'll have a pen for you. We are very happy to have with us tonight Reverend Wayne Allen from Epworth United Methodist Church for our invocation. If you would, please come to the microphone, so the folks on TV can hear you.
Let us pray. Creator God, we give you great thanks for the inspiration you gave to those who founded, yes, this our country, the United States of America, for our state of North Carolina and for the county that we call Cabarrus. We thank you for the ways in which you inspired them to bring government that is, yes, of the people. We thank you gracious God for the ways in which your Spirit has led and blessed the residents of our county in all these many years. Now gracious God, we give you thanks for what you will do this night. We pray that your Spirit might inspire these, our Commissioners, to continue to enhance the quality of life in our county, Cabarrus. We offer this our prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much Reverend Allen. We appreciate you coming and being with us tonight. And now if our Boy Scout troop would come forward, and if you would introduce yourself, tell us where you go to school and what's your favorite thing about scouting? And then to my right, your left, Commissioner Honeycutt will have a pen for you after you introduce yourself.
I'm Noah Craig, and I attend CC Griffin Middle School. My favorite thing about scouting is that it's able to teach me many life skills that I'm not able to learn in public school.
Great, thank you.
My name's William Calloway, and I'm homeschooled, and my favorite thing about scouting is probably the camping trips we go on.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Liblich, and I go to school at Jan Frees Middle School, and my favorite thing about scouting is the merit badges that can teach us good things in life.
Thank you.
My name is Carter Owen, and I go to the Cabarrus Church Academy, and my favorite thing about scouting is probably the camping trips.
Thank you.
My name's Clyde McNutt. I go to Central Cabarrus High School, and my favorite thing about scouting is all the camping trips we go on.
Thank you. Feel free to pull it down if you'd like.
Thank you.
My name is Elijah Craig. I go to Rocky River Elementary, and my favorite thing about scouting is the camping trips.
Thank you.
My name is Mitchell Wire. I go to AC Lincoln Middle School, and my favorite thing about scouting is camping trips and merit badges.
Great, thank you. We appreciate all of you being with us tonight. First up on our agenda for tonight is the approval or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies of those before you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that the minutes be approved as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. Next is the approval of the agenda, and you all have that before you as well, including the changes to the agenda on page 234. And so what would be your pleasure on that?
May for approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We are very happy to have with us tonight one of our youth Commissioners, Nupur Perik, and it's a pleasure to have you with us here tonight. And if there's anything that you would like to say to the group, we would encourage you to do so.
Hi, good afternoon. First thing is, my name is Nupur Perik, and I am on the Cabarrus County Youth Commission. Right now, we are planning our very first Cabarrus County Youth Speaks event. It's going to be held in May. This event is for high schoolers. It's to give them a voice to express their opinions and their ideas in front of their peers. It's kind of like a TED Talk, but not like a TED Talk due to the legal issues that we would have to go through, which we would have to go through in a year in advance. This event will be held at four of our Cabarrus County libraries. One is our Conapolis Library, Harrisburg Library, and two others. The applications are due April 1st, and the applications are found on the Cabarrus County Youth Commission's webpage. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We're delighted to have you with us tonight and look forward to your event. Next up, we go to recognitions and presentations. And first is a recognition of Sergeant Barry Bruce, and we're glad to have Sheriff Brad Riley with us tonight to make that presentation.
I want to take just a moment to say thank you once again for recognizing one of our own that's about to leave the ranks with 30 years of service to the citizens of Cabarrus County, and it's tremendous feat in and of itself to be here that long and see the many changes and the impact that folks like Sergeant Barry Bruce has made, not only at Sheriff's Office, but on the citizens of Cabarrus County. And I would venture to say that if he had an opportunity to talk about some of the changes he's been through, 30 years, it's almost a total opposite of where he started at 30 years ago. But Barry has been a fantastic employee. In just a moment, I'll read you a few things, but on a personal note, I've known him since the day I went to work there, and I've always considered him to be a good friend of mine. He's always one of those individuals that you love to work alongside of, never complains about anything. You give him any task, he does it. Not always with a smile, but that doesn't mean that he's unhappy. You would never know it if he was unhappy. He's just not that kind of person. He has been a true blessing. He always brings a voice of reason and a good heart, just a kind person to every situation, and I just wish that we had many more like him. Going out the door, I know that he's the kind of person, and he's told me that if you ever need me, feel free to call on me. Barry's one of the first persons that if you ever earn any accolades along the way, he's the first one to bring you a small gift or token of appreciation and just a big-hearted fellow. He's going to be greatly missed. I just want to read you again a little bit of the things about Barry, and before you do recognize him. He's been married for 36 years, which is also a great thing, to Sheila Page Bruce, who is also a county employee. She's here. He graduated from East Bank Senior High School in 1979, served with the US Army Reserves. He served also in West Virginia Air National Guard, Security Police Wing. Graduated from Rowan Cabarrus Community College with a degree in criminal justice, started with Sheriff's Office in 1989, June of 1989. We started a motorcycle brigade in 2003 as a secondary thing, and he helped implement that program and helped seek out the grants to get that done. He's a member and past master of Allen Graham Masonic Lodge in Conapolis, where he's very active, a member and past president of the Cabarrus County Shrine Club, vice president of Yakon Valley Motorcycle Riders, president of Concord Victory Riders. He also teaches motorcycle safety courses through the Safety Foundation. His future plans are to continue to do that, and he thinks that maybe if he gets bored and gets caught up on his to-do list, that he may even look for something else to do in his own way. But again, thank you once again for recognizing him. And Barry, thank you so much. On a personal note, for being a good friend and 30 years of service is greatly appreciated.
I said I wasn't going to tear up, but I might anyway. I've met a lot of good people here, have made a lot of good friends, know some of the board members. I just want to say thanks to the citizens of this county for allowing me to serve in this position that I'm served in. I'm going to miss a lot of people, a lot of people in this building and the Sheriff's Office, but it comes a time when, you know, you have to step out, so this is my time. But thanks to everyone in this county for allowing me to hold this job.
On behalf of the Commissioners and the citizens of Cabarrus County, we have a little something saying you won't forget us. When you're trying to figure out what you're going to do with all that time, you think about us, and if you want to donate or volunteer some of that time, we'll take it. How about that?
Okay.
Congratulations and good luck on your retirement.
Sergeant Bruce, we congratulate you and wish you well on your retirement, but don't try to take your wife away from us. We depend on her very heavily as well. So thank you for your service. Okay, next up, we have Ned Hudson, who is with us for a recognition of Dennis Testerman
Commissioners, Chairman Steve, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to honor Dennis, Dennis Testerman. I've been knowing him a long time. He was on, he was working for the county when I came on as a member of the Board, Soil and Water Board. So I've been a member of the Soil and Water Board for 20 years, and so he was here about six years, I think, before I came on the picture. But anyway, I've enjoyed these years together, and hopefully that he will have a long and happy retirement. And we're glad to have Paula, his wife. So I do have a few things I'd like to read about Dennis. Dennis was born and raised on a farm in Virginia and graduated from Virginia Tech. We won't hold out against him. After graduation, he served five years in Niagara and Pakistan, working with agricultural mission projects. In 1990, he came to Cabarrus County to work as a Resource Conservation Specialist with the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District. He retired January 27th of this year. Dennis was a 2005 graduate of the Natural Resources Leadership Initiative at NC State University. He has served as a board member for the Land Trust from central North Carolina. He was coordinator on the Big Sweet Program in the county for many years. So other highlights, he prepared successful nominations of Porter Farms and Barbie Farms for Conservation Farm Family of the Year by the State Association. He's also, he's also prepared a successful nomination for Diane Hudson and Deanna Duncan. Diane for Conservating National Conservation Teacher of the Year, and for Deanna, the State Conservation Teacher of the Year. The Souther Wet Prairie, significant natural heritage areas on the verge of becoming a state-owned natural preserve. 20 years after Dennis wrote a state grant to fund an inventory of natural history, natural areas throughout the county, assisting the board with the development of now growing Conservation Needsman Farm Land Preservation Program. The Porters and Barby Farms and Boss Farms are participating in this program. Farm land preservation is a major goal of our district. Conservation education is also a major goal of our district, which includes the poster, public speaking, and essay contest. Many students participate in these contests each year, and seven students from Cabarrus County have won first place in the State Conservation Education Contest with one national winner during Dennis's career. The Envirothon is a middle and high school contest that includes soils, forestry, and wildlife, aquatics, and environmental issues. The area contest was held last week at Catawba College, and Cannon High School placed first, and which we are proud of that. They will now compete in the state contest in April. Dennis is a life member of both State and National Envirothon Environmental Education Association, and he plans to continue learning and teaching. He plans on devoting more time through the Church of his role as stewardship of creation enabler with the Presbyterian of Charlotte. So it's a pleasure for me to welcome you and glad that you've come to this point, but maybe it's sort of sad in a way, but again, it'll be a change, so congratulations.
One of the, one of the things that I noted in the opening prayer tonight was the mention of quality of life, and that really, for me, sums up the mission of the Soil and Water Conservation District. We've been around in this county since, I think, the first attempts to organize a district, what is now the district goes back to the 1920s. I am the last in my family. I follow my mother and my father and my older brother as public servants. I did the math about the time I was looking at retiring and came up with 120 years, and it's been a real pleasure to be part of Cabarrus County and the Soil and Water Conservation District. I think it's a unique job, working for a locally-led organization like the Conservation District, and to work on voluntary conservation in a day and time when regulations are a lot of how we work at managing the environment, and it's been a very unique opportunity, and I think we've been very effective at what we've done. It seems like the citizens are interested in what we're doing. The citizen opinion polls that you all do every two years consistently shows environment being in the top five, along with jobs, and crime protection and those sorts of things. So I hope that the board and the staff will look forward to continuing cooperation from your board going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Dennis, we have a little retirement gift for you as well. Thank you for your many years of service, and thank you for sharing him with us, and good luck in your retirement.
My wife Paula, by the way. Best wishes to you, Dennis. Dennis has been a frequent visitor at these meetings, often with a lot of school kids along with him for awards, and you will be missed. At this time, I'd like to call on Alan Thompson for EMS Service Award Recognition.
I would also invite paramedics Katie Curran and Paramedic Chris Gaynor to come forward with me. It's an honor to be here tonight, as we have the opportunity to recognize two of our amazing EMS team members. Each year, we select two recipients, one for a Star of Life Award and one for the Employee Service Award. And these recipients are nominated by their peers based on observations of their work, their professionalism, the way that they contribute to the organization. Both awards recognize the level of professionalism that they take to the streets each day, their efforts to advance the profession, and also their efforts to recruit others and to provide community education. So tonight, we recognize for the 2016 Star of Life Award, Paramedic Chris Gaynor. He's been employed with Cabarrus County EMS since 2007 in the capacity of paramedic and field training officer, master paramedic, and senior paramedic, and he's worked well over 1,000 hours in the past year in a part-time capacity. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree from Western Carolina University and is currently enrolled in a Master of Science program. He completed his paramedic training program locally at Rowan Cabarrus Community College and went on to obtain his North Carolina Paramedic credential and his National Registry Paramedic credential. He holds various instructor credentials in multiple different disciplines, and also serves as one of the instructors for the State Medical Assistance Team Training and has been responsible for providing education to many of our staff. One of the neat things is his recruitment efforts. He has transitioned to a full-time role at Central Piedmont Community College, and with the education he's providing, the exposure that he offers, he's been very effective at recruiting others to come to work in Cabarrus County. This most recent group that we hired, I believe, seven, seven people were directly responsible, were a direct result of his recruiting efforts. So his passion is about providing care, about taking excellent care to the bedside, and it's also about educating future EMS providers so that they can carry on the traditions that have been established in this system. So Chris, we want to thank you for your service. We want to thank you for your commitment to the profession and to education.
Thank you.
The 2016 EMS Service Award is presented to Catherine Curran. She has been employed with Cabarrus County EMS since June of 2015 in the position of paramedic and senior paramedic and now master paramedic. She holds a Bachelor of Arts degree from Queens College. She completed her paramedic training in Charlotte and currently holds credentials as a North Carolina paramedic and is a nationally-registered paramedic. She also holds instructor certifications in several disciplines, and her efforts also have been focused on community education, teaching many hands-only CPR classes to our community, and also recruiting. Over the last six months, three of our new hires are directly attributed to her recruiting efforts. And she also plays a tremendous role in our disaster response team, most recently deploying to Hurricane Matthew when we sent teams down to the coast to provide care to those citizens. So we're very honored to recognize you tonight, Katie, for your services, for your recruiting efforts, your community education, and the level of professionalism that you take to the streets each day. So we're very fortunate to have these two team members as representatives of Cabarrus EMS. They, while we acknowledge their efforts, they also represent the efforts of all of our team members in Cabarrus EMS and the passion they have about making a difference when seconds count. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chris and Catherine.
I just would like to take this opportunity to, first of all, thank Alan Thompson, as well as the administration, for taking, taking a chance on me 10 years ago. When I first came down here, a northern boy that they didn't know anything about. If it wasn't for Alan and the leadership team that was here back then, I wouldn't be in the position that I am today. Literally, I can explain this at a later date if you would like to know, I would literally not be alive if it wasn't for the crews at Cabarrus County EMS. So I do offer my heartfelt appreciation to them, as well as the administration, and for allowing me to continue my education and be in the position that I'm in today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You guys can call me Katie. It doesn't have to be Catherine. I just want to say thank you to all of you and to the people of Cabarrus County for letting me into their homes, because I came from Mecklenburg County. I did my first half of my career down there, and I definitely feel like I've found a family with Cabarrus EMS, and I really appreciate all the opportunities I've had here. Thank you.
Thank you both. We appreciate what you do. Next on our agenda is proclamation for National Donate Life Month, and we are happy to have with us Brandy Dooley from Life Share, who has a few comments before we do present that resolution.
Thank you for the proclamation. As a former resident of Cabarrus County, an employee of Life Share, and also, more importantly, a mother of liver transplant recipient, I am happy to accept on behalf of Life Share. There are several people in Cabarrus County who have also been personally affected and touched by organ donation. I ask if they are here tonight, if they could please stand. On behalf of them and the roughly 3,000 Cabarrus County or North Carolina residents that are on the waiting list, we ask that you consider becoming an organ donor. If you'd like to, you can sign up on the DMV website at lifeshareofcarolinas.org, even on the Health app on your iPhone. Thanks again to the Commission and all of you for celebrating National Donate Life Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. This is certainly especially important to us, having one of our own Commissioners, Commissioner Shu, having been a two-time organ recipient. Great, so I do have a proclamation that I'll read at this time for your consideration. Whereas more than 118,000 men, women, and children in the United States currently need life-saving organ transplants, and nearly 2,890 of those people are North Carolinians, and whereas an average of 18 people awaiting transplants die each day because there is a severe shortage of donated organs, and whereas every eight minutes, another name is added to the national transplant waiting list, and whereas providing facts about donation and dispelling misinformation and myths are key to increasing the number of people who sign up as donors, and whereas the North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles plays a critical role with nearly 5 million North Carolinians in the state's donor registry having registered when receiving a driver's license or state ID card, and whereas one donor, one organ donor can save the lives of up to eight people and improve many more lives through tissue and cornea donation, and whereas North Carolinians are encouraged to get the facts about donation, discuss their wishes with their family, and sign up as donors with the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles or online at www.donatlifenc.org/register, and whereas residents of Cabarrus County have been touched by donation as recipients of life-saving transplants and as members of donor families who have literally given others a second chance at life. Now be it resolved, we, the members of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 to be North Carolina Donate Life Month in Cabarrus County, and urge our residents to give serious thought to the importance of eye, organ, and tissue donation, and to consider joining the North Carolina Donor Registry, and further to notify their family members that they have done so. So at this time, I would entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make that motion. Brandy, you're probably wondering, you know, when I stood, well, what kind of transplant did he have? Well, I had a heart transplant in 1995 and a kidney transplant from a living donor in '02. And 20-some years ago, I never ever thought that I would be where I am today, much less as a Commissioner, but still be living. And it's because of the, the organ procurement, organ donation program that life does go on. And so I gladly move that we approve the proclamation for April being the National Donate Life Month.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second that we adopt the proclamation for National Donate Life Month. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And thank you, Brandy, again, for being with us tonight. At this time, on our agenda, we have informal public comments, where we invite members of the public to come forward and comment on issues of concern to them. I do not have any yellow cards that have been submitted tonight, but if there's anybody that would like to speak, you're welcome to come at this time. Seeing no one, we Seeing no one, we will move on to our consent agenda. And of course, you all have a list in front of you, and these are all items that we have discussed at our work session earlier in the month. Do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move on to new business. First item is from EMS, and I think Alan Thompson, yes, yeah, you moved from the back wall to the front, is here to answer any questions you might have about non-emergency franchise renewal, and I think we will have a public hearing for that as well. Do you have any questions for Alan? Or do you have anything you'd like to explain?
No, sir.
We have talked about this at our work session also, and this is an annual franchise that has to be renewed each year, correct?
Yes, sir. And I will say and offer this, Greg Kirby, the owner of the company, is not able to be with us tonight due to a health issue, so he is not here. Otherwise, he had planned on being in attendance.
Right. Okay, thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing and receive comments from anybody that would like to speak regarding our non-emergency franchise renewal with American TransMed. Seeing no one coming to speak, I will close the public hearing. I think maybe we will do this again, one more time, so we'll have another, you'll have another opportunity to speak if you'd like. We will move on at this time to item number two, which is capital funding request for mobile units and bus purchases for Cabarrus County schools. And I think we've got Kelly Klutz and Tim Louder with us.
Do you have any questions regarding the mobile units and the yellow school buses? It's due to significant growth or expected growth that we're looking at for this fiscal year, coming fiscal year.
Of course, we talked about this at length at our work session also, so...
We did. I have one question since Mr. Louder was not with you. The mobile units does include hardscape, ADA ramps, everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear.
Okay, any other questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion regarding this matter. And the requested action is a motion to approve the funding request for mobile units and yellow school buses and to authorize the Finance Director to prepare the appropriate budget revision and related capital project ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the action.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we will move on to number three, which is a funding request for the new high school land, legal, and administration. And we're glad to have you still with us to talk about that.
Thank you. This is just a phasing or cash flow. So as we developed the project cost, we worked with staff to fund it over phases, and so this is the phase that we need now.
Right. And of course, we have had extensive discussion in the past about the purchase of this property and the plans for the new high school. Any questions for Ms. Klutz or Mr. Louder? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the $164,342 new high school budget request and authorize the Finance Director to prepare the appropriate budget revision and related capital project ordinances.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And a third request from Cabarrus County Schools, funding request for a performance learning center, engineering, architect, and administrative/legal fees, which we have discussed this as well.
This is the first phase of the PLC. This will get us started on this project.
This basically puts together all the contract documents necessary to be able to go to a design-build process on the site.
Okay.
And also to do the follow-up behind the design build, make sure it's done the way we wanted it to be.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I only have one question, and that is, have we decided where this is going to go yet?
Yes, sir, I think so.
I didn't tell him that.
I mean, I know it's been a toss-up, and I really would like to know what the plan is.
We are currently working with the Department of Transportation to use a piece of property that's basically landlocked, adjacent to the Winkler Middle School, to allow us to put it there, which would cause us a lot less coordination issues than with the high school. Having this school come online a year ahead of the high school, being an active construction site, was more than problematic for us. And we're working with DOT right now to have that property in our hands to put it there adjacent to Winkler Elementary School, Winkler Middle School, I'm sorry.
Obviously, if you're working on it, you must feel pretty good that it's forthcoming.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It is a land that was purchased as a remnant once they built the new George Osborne Parkway, so it's basically landlocked and it's just a tract of land that's there that DOT owns and needs to get rid of. And so we'd love for them to get rid of it to us, and so we're working with them.
That's always good, you know, when DOT or any other governmental entity can work together with us or vice versa, and especially in a situation like this where it's going to benefit the community, benefit the public in general. So I'm glad that we're able to get that worked out.
And we will have to, you know, purchase the property at the appraised value that they acquired it, which was a pretty low price, but because we're going to save that much on infrastructure, because it already had an infrastructure in place adjacent to this site, it will more absorb it within the existing budget.
That's the best news I've heard in a while, so thank you. Thank you, buddy.
Yes, sir.
Of course, it's not a done deal yet, but it looks like it will be. And I think that addresses the issue that you had earlier expressed about separation between the, that and the high school. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the $219,000 Performance Learning Center budget request and authorize the Finance Director to prepare the appropriate budget revision and related capital project ordinances.
Thank you. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, next up is a capital funding request for bus purchases for Connaples City Schools, and we're glad to have Superintendent Buckwell and Mr. Crabtree with us tonight to answer any questions you might have about that.
Good evening. We're asking for five buses, yellow buses, and, recall from our last meeting, this is for the redistricting of our district and the construction of the new middle school, so it's more how we're grouping students other than growth. So any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Crabtree? And we talked about this pretty extensively the other day as well. And I think your explanation was that the change in the grade assignments to the elementary schools was the primary factor that was driving this.
Yes, sir.
Right. Any other questions? If not...
We may have asked this at the work session. Do these buses, you guys are automatically buying cameras to go on the buses? I know it came up, but it might have been Cabarrus County Schools, and it might have been you guys, or is it both? Are you doing that?
It's probably both. We're doing it, and I'm sure they are too.
Okay, I remember that they were, so these, we'll have cameras from the get-go?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the funding request for yellow school buses and authorize the Finance Director to prepare the appropriate budget revision and related capital project ordinances in the amount of $441,739.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to the next request, also from Connaples City Schools, for contingency to cover a change order for the Connaples Middle School construction project.
Yes, first, thank you for the approval of the buses. We very much appreciate that. The change order, there was some discussion. There were a few things on that, but I think what caused the most discussion was the turf in the courtyard. I did forward some talking points to everyone today about that, and those were from our exceptional children's director and the physical therapist for the school system. Basically laying out, I won't bore everybody and read them all again, but laying out the benefits of having turf for EC children through sensory and for safety. And I also talked with an architect last week who was aware of a case in South Carolina where a school district was involved in a lawsuit because an exceptional child was hurt on a play area with mulch. And as part of that lawsuit settlement, it was agreed that they would use turf from here on out, so that school, particular school system is using turf in those areas. So just another example of why that would be a good idea, and just want to, you know, we're building the school now. I would rather do it right the first time than have to go back and try to retrofit that in at a future point. So I'll ask if there's any questions on that.
Well, you know, we beat this up a little bit last time we talked about it, and I apologize for prolonging it, but I do want to ask, obviously, well, first off, obviously, the health and safety of the children is utmost, no doubt. Children have always run, and they've always played, and they've always failed, they've always scratched their knees, and they're going to keep doing that, whether we got turf or whether we got whatever we got there, they're going to keep doing that. There's no doubt that turf is very nice. It's nice to look at, it's easy to keep up, it's reoccurring costs for the county and for the school system as it wears out. You have to replace it and all of that. And obviously, there are savings because you don't have to mow it, bring in lawnmowers in and out and all of those type things. But what was in the budget to start with that this change order is taking its place?
In the budget to start with would be just grass, just grass.
Okay. Was there planters and all of that around the grass?
There would be some raised beds, but that was not in the contract. That would be later through our steel program, so basically just grass.
Okay. Well, I'm sure there may be another question or two on it, but I've been thinking about this more than I have any, even the multimillion-dollar decisions that we've made. For some reason, this turf has stuck in my mind, simply because that we've got so many other schools that don't have this, and whether we've had issues with EC children or children in general, I don't know. Do you know if we've had any incidences, people getting, kids getting hurt or anything?
I think, in addition to getting hurt, because kid, what you said at first was exactly correct. I think one of the considerations is the intensity and duration of the abilities, disabilities that are coming to us today are way different than what we have used, that we have dealt with in the past. And we have a lot more kids who are runners, a lot more kids who try to leave the supervision of the teachers, and we are talking about an age group that is going to be 12, 13, 14, 15-year-olds who are more active in that regard. And so the supervision of them is equally important, I think, as the safety issues of them. There's other issues, too. We are, for some reason, we are gaining a large number of autistic kids. And autistic kids have a lot of tactile issues that they bring to the table with them. And some of those are, and it may sound funny and it may sound trite, but it's if, where they can walk barefoot safely, where they can use different crawling and movement modalities to get around, it's important to have safe areas for that to happen. So we would be building, in my estimation, because we've done it at other schools, something else outside of this, of the school to keep runners from running, to keep, to be more accommodating for our autistic kids and other kids who have tactile issues. So it's not just autistic kids, but it's a lot of kids are coming to us with a lot different, way different disabilities than before.
And, you know, I totally agree with you, Chip, because it's a different environment now than what it used to be. You know, we used to didn't have these issues. I know that. I don't recall having EC children. If we did, I don't think, they just either fit in so well, or they were so well-adapted or whatever, that we never knew it. But I know the society we live in now does have these children with the different various challenges that they deal with. And, you know, me and my wife were talking about this particular issue, and I'm going to tell you what she told me when we were talking about turf, and this is a little bit funny, but she said, "Well, when I misbehave in school and I didn't do right, I'd find my butt in the principal's office." And that's what she told me, you know, and she said, "Whether it was grass, turf, or whatever, that's where I found myself," you know. But I applaud you for reaching out and trying to make things better there, you know, for the school and for everyone that's going to go there. And there's no doubt it'll be pretty, for sure, you know, and it definitely will help, you know, with potential accidents and things like that, and the upkeep's an issue, too. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners?
I've just got a quick comment. I did not see what you sent, but if Nancy Hale is your physical therapist, then she is top-notch.
Yes, sir.
So if she has said that this is a benefit to her and her program, that's all I need to hear. And, you know, Commissioner Shu, I'm with you a little bit on the surface of it, pardon the pun. It does seem like, well, golly, hitting grass is good enough. But I think when you really boil down to what they're going to be using it for and the maintenance and upkeep, I think it's worth the, what we're trying to do. And again, if she has said that this is an area that she will use and her children are going to benefit from it, then that's, that gives me a lot of confidence in what we're doing, so I'm okay with it, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Any other questions? Well, I appreciate you pointing out those facts because I think that the public, myself included, really does not have a full grasp of the situations that you have to deal with and the spectrum of students that you have in that school, so I'm sure that is a factor. Okay, Commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the change order as presented. I'm not looking at the formal motion, if I need to read that specifically. The motion to approve $76,292 change order from the project contingency for the Connaples Middle School project and to authorize the Finance Director to prepare the appropriate budget revision and related capital project ordinances.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chairman, I think that the amount that we're asking for, Commissioner Kiger, $76,292, that would not be the correct amount because we're only talking about, well, I guess we would be too. It's all included in that motion.
Yeah.
Now, here's the thing. I'm not going to vote for this particular motion because of the turf. So how are we going to break that out? The turf's only 73,000.
Well, if we get a second to Mr. Kiger's motion and it passes, then that would include the artificial turf.
Right, it would.
If that motion fails, then we would have the opportunity to come back and make a motion for a portion of that.
I just want to make sure you know. Not really. I know you did. Thank you, Steve.
Yes, sir. Okay, do I hear a second to Commissioner Kiger's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve a $76,292 change order from the project contingency for the Connaples Middle School project and to authorize the Finance Director to prepare the appropriate budget revision and related capital project expenses. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
And that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is from our county attorney, a request for a refund of portion of excise tax on real property transfer. Mr. Cook, we'll hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see in the agenda item, this is a request from Attorney Joshua Nip for a refund of an alleged overpayment of revenue stamps or excise tax on a real estate transfer. The amount of overpayment claimed is $2,444. You may have recalled from the consent agenda, there was a similar matter that was put on consent at the work session, um, related to an overpayment of excise tax. In that case, it was clear what the reason was for the, um, for the request for overpayment. It was just a transpositional error of, of numbers. In this case, from what has been submitted, it is not entirely clear, uh, why there is this request for an overpayment. When that is the case, under the statutes, um, you are to conduct a hearing on that to determine whether the, um, the refund of the overpayment is appropriate. The request for this, um, refund came in on February 13th of this year. Uh, under the statutes, you have to conduct a hearing within 90 days, and you have to set the hearing within 60 days. If you set this matter for hearing at your regular meeting on April 18th, it will certainly meet those requirements and, and give us enough time to notify, um, Attorney Nip of the hearing date. So what you're being asked to do tonight is to actually set the hearing. Uh, I've talked to him in the meantime, after the work session, and, and told him what was, um, going on here and suggested that he provide some additional documentation or information, uh, between now and the hearing date to see, uh, in order to be able to determine what the situation is. And he has indicated he would do that. I've not received anything yet, but he may be waiting until I notify him of the hearing. So, um, so I would, uh, recommend that you set the hearing for your next regular meeting, which I understand to be April 18th. It's a Tuesday because of Easter Monday, so, um, and then we'll see what develops we now and then. And, um, I'd suggest to him he didn't need to be here tonight for the setting of the hearing, but, uh, that he would probably want to be here for, um, the April meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cook? If not, at this time, I would entertain a motion that we set a public hearing, uh, regarding the request for refund of a portion of excise tax on real property transfer for Tuesday, April the 18th.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have appointments to boards and committees. Uh, first is Active Living and Parks. The term of appointment for Samantha Fisk, who is the Eastern Area Representative, expired on January 31st, 2017. Ms. Fisk is eligible and willing to serve another term. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Samantha Fisk to the Active Living and Parks Commission as the Eastern Area Representative for a three-year term ending January 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And next, we have, uh, appointments to the Board of Equalization and Review. Robert Carruth has resigned from his position on the Board of Equalization and Review. It is requested to appoint Helen McGinnis to complete the unexpired regular position term vacated by Mr. Carruth, and to appoint Bernard Felder to complete the unexpired alternate position term vacated by Ms. McGinnis. Um, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Robert Carruth from the Board of Equalization and Review roster and thank him for his service.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Uh, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Helen McGinnis to the Board of Equalization and Review as a regular member to complete an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2017.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Bernard Felder to the Board of Equalization and Review as an alternate member to complete an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2018.
I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to appointments for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. An application to serve on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council has been received from Heather Mobley. At its February 15th, 2017 meeting, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council voted to recommend Ms. Mobley to be appointed to fill the vacant juvenile defense attorney position. A letter from the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Chair in this regard is attached. Ms. Mobley resides in Mecklenburg County. An exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Heather Mobley to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council as the juvenile defense attorney representative for an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2017, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move on to the Mental Health Advisory Board. The Board of Commissioners established the Mental Health Advisory Board on October 17th, 2016. Since then, there have been several organizational meetings held with a majority of the applications on file. It is requested to appoint members to the Cabarrus Mental Health Advisory Board with staggered initial two and three-year terms. You all have that roster before you. I think in our discussions at those organizational meetings, uh, we targeted very specific areas that needed to be represented on that board. Uh, we have asked the members who have filed applications for that board, uh, to also submit, uh, alternate positions, and many of them have, have done that. So you will see, uh, in your list of applications, um, some additional applications for those alternate positions. But right now, I will, will read the list that we would like, that we should consider and perhaps appoint tonight. And I'll go ahead and may put that in the form of a motion so we won't have to read them twice.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also make note that on this, it's obviously being a new advisory committee, that there'll still be two vacancies left after we get through with this.
Yes.
After we make these appointments, then there'll still be two vacancies.
Yes, and I think there are some applications that are in process still.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and we'll come, come back to those.
Right.
Um, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointments to the Cabarrus County Mental Health Advisory Board, uh, which include Ashley Shanley from the District Attorney's Office, William Hamby as a local judge, Catherine Combs for the North Carolina DPS Adult Probation and Department of Juvenile Justice, Brad Riley from the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office, Gary Gasek from the Concord Police Department, Woody Chavis from the Connaplous Police Department, Elizabeth Poole, Cabarrus County Commissioner, Scott Pageant, Mayor of the City of Concord, Steve Shasha, Mayor of the City of Harrisburg, Darrell Hennett, Mayor of the City of Connaplous, Kathy Kitts, Mayor of the City of Midland, Dale Udi, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, John Basilese from Cabarrus County Schools, Jessica Grant from Cabarr- Connaplous City Schools, Reed Thornburg from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare, William Pilkington from Cabarrus Health Alliance, Ben Rose, Department of Human Services, Rebecca True, who is a local provider, Tree Tang, also a local provider, John McKenzie, a local psychiatrist, Georgia Lozier as an at-large representative, Alan Thompson at-large, and Gail Alston at-large. And as you can see, this is a pretty comprehensive list of folks. So-
I'll second that motion. Can you make that the form of the motion?
I requested a motion.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Uh, next, we have, um, appointments to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Maryam Kasumpour's term on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee ends March 31st, 2017. She is not interested in serving another term. It is requested to remove her name for, from the roster. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Maryam Kasumpour from the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee roster and thank her for her service.
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Uh, next, we have the appointments to the Watershed Improvement Commission. Darrell Fur's term of appointment on the Watershed Improvement Commission expired February 15th, 2017. Mr. Sir Fur has served on the commission since 2006 and is willing to be reappointed to another term. An exception for the length of service provision of the appointment policy would be needed for him. Aside from commission members, there are not any other current applications on file. Uh, Mr. Fur was here earlier tonight. Uh, he does an excellent job. I also serve as liaison to that Watershed Improvement Commission and would recommend him. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Darrell Fur to the Watershed Improvement Commission for a six-year term ending March 31st, 2023, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy.
One more.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Uh, we have a number of reports, as you see listed on your agenda, attached tonight. And at this time, I would be happy to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. Okay, hearing none. Um, I would point out that we do always have, as these appointments, we've just completed a number of vacancies on various county boards and committees, and a list of those is available on our website, or you may call the county manager's office and speak to our clerk, Megan Schmidt, who can help you with those applications. And we always encourage as many citizens as possible to be involved in the process and serve on those committee. So now we will move to general comments by board members. Does anybody have anything they would like to say at this time? Seeing-
Just as a follow-up to what you had just said, I'd like to, uh, mention that there is a vacancy on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for an under-18 student. So anybody in the public that, uh, is interested in that, hopefully, maybe you can get the word out, but there is a vacancy on that, the JCPC.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other comments? If not, at this time, we do have need of a closed session tonight. Uh, I would entertain a motion to go in closed session to discuss pending litigation as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point 11A.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Uh, we are now in closed session. Uh, thank you all for being with us tonight.